I'll call it to order. Um, let's have an indication before we get started. Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that we've had. Lord, we just ask that you be with us as we do the work of the planning board and help us to make the right choices and decisions. And Lord, we just ask that you be with us, lead us and guide us in all that we do and say, in our name we pray, amen. You're welcome to join us for the pledge for.
Sure. We live by the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to everyone, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is approval of the minutes. I think nine's go out. Those were April, right?
Yes.
Yes. Well, entertain a motion for the April, um, minutes. So move to approve. I have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'd like to add, um, with the attendance, my name was placed on the attendance up at the top, but I was present because I did, I did do a vote down.
Everybody okay with passing those with that addition of the, uh, attendance? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Our second thing on the agenda is to, um, nominate and appoint a vice chair to the planning board. Do I have a, um, I'd like to nominate Paul Norris. Okay, we have a motion called Paul Norris. Do we have a second? Okay. Do we have any discussions?
Paul, say anything. I'm good.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. All right, welcome aboard. Number three zoning map amendment by Apartment Concepts. We'll let you.
Sure. I'd be more than happy to present that. Uh, I hope everybody's doing well tonight on the planning board. I would say that, uh, part of the developer Apartment Concepts LLC, of course, Ryan is here tonight. I said, part of the, the part of the ownership group is here tonight. In the event the planning board has any questions on this, and if you recall, we did discuss this, uh, I guess that would have been April, uh, some time ago. Uh, it is back on the agenda tonight. It is, uh, you can see in your agenda packets that we have taken a great deal of time to put together a, uh, complete application and, and really try and betterize and cross our beach from the standpoint of doing what's asked of us. Uh, for this one, as well as the other two, I, I say the other two, the other two agenda items for the, uh, rezoning, both special use permits. There are checklists in your packets that the application that you see in your packet does go in chronological order with those checklists. So if you want to look at that anytime, that is the, uh, sort of the method to the madness there. Uh, so for this specific rezoning request, I will remind the planning board that for the rezoning part, the special use permit has nothing to do with the rezoning request. They are two separate islands. Uh, this is essentially to rezone this parcel that you see in your, uh, packet and I will put on the screen here. There, it's parcel one, one, seven. This parcel to rezone from R one to R two. And in layman's terms, that means single family residents to multifamily residents. It is consistent with the Conference of Land Use Plan and it is consistent with the residential zoning that is established around it. There are no questions for staff. Staff would ask the planning board to make, make a recommendation for the rezoning request to the board commissioners.
Do we have any, uh, questions about the, um, application? Or questions from staff?
Did you want to use this supplemental for the first one or the, um, special use?
That's a good question. The supplemental can actually be for both. It's, it's probably more applicable to the special use permit. Down to, uh, the requirements that, that consist of special use permit for the specific use, but it could be either or. And on that note, there is a, uh, agenda attachment that you'll notice when it was laid out on, on the chair there. If you didn't get one, please let myself or Pat Taylor know. It does include an updated map with the, uh, two hundred and fifty foot circle, uh, radius that the zoning code, uh, asked for in, in terms of parcels that are adjacent to it. Uh, but again, that's, that's on the special use side. So this will be the area that the, uh, letters are sent to essentially, but thi- this is the map. And then if you flip the page to the next one, that's the actual parcel owners, addresses, and pins.
Any other questions?
Not for this matter. That's like, there will be a bullet point period at the end. And this is a recommendation to the plan, to the board commissioners. This is not a, uh, decision.
Page is that, check for your stone?
It is.
It's a D and three.
It's three A, but it's, it's at the back of the actual application. You'll see a picture of the zoning file on the property. It's the same.
Got it. Any other questions from the board members? Not all in the same motion.
I move we move forward with the rezoning as presented.
I second that. Okay, is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed like sign. No opposition? Motion carries?
In that, uh, case, if you'll read the motion for consideration, it will be number one. That needs to be read after the record reports.
And the board has reviewed the documents and found the zoning map amendment is consistent with the objectives and policies in the adopted land use plan. Number four is the special use permit.
All right, again, uh, the developer, uh, part of the developer was here, uh, Ryan, to answer any questions on the special use permit. So this is a special use permit for, uh, a multi-use, I mean, if you do a multi-family, uh, apartment complex. As you can see in the application there, there is a D, there is, uh, another map of the parcel. There is a drawing or rendering of what these apartments would look like. I guess there are more such duplexes, but still multifamily. There's a plot plan here, and I believe speaking with the developer, he had an updated plot plan that does, uh, take into account some of the, uh, buffers as well as the vegetation, the parking areas. It is worth noting that there's two parking spots per unit as required by the zoning code. If there's also setbacks listed on this, there is, uh, essentially what the zoning code recommends here presented. You know, it's supposed to be determined. But take a little bit of time to look over that because it is another, then, uh, we wanted to update that, uh, to get a little bit of closure scale in terms of what, what the developer was proposing. Having said that, this is which would be, uh, all residential uses. And this does fall under our Conference of Land Use Plan vision that was created. So remind board, if they had any conditions, they could certainly, uh, attach those conditions with the decision to vote for or against the, uh, special use permit recommendation to the board of commissioners. Having said that, uh, I think that Ryan would like to pass some comments to the board. So I will now turn it over to, uh, Ryan.
I guess the biggest thing would be to bring my handy question. Uh, I know they've got a packet, um, and the other thing, just to be familiar with, um, some of the other projects that we've done. Uh, we just got finished with this project that did the medical building. Uh, so those, these buildings will be very similar to those buildings. Obviously, this parcel is not big as Summer Winds. There will not be many buildings. Uh, with the construction completed later, it's right down. And we decided to do it in a whole work, first to do it in, in more of the bill. Uh, the parcel, it is very good, uh, full of buildings, but it's just, I'd like to do it in one building as possible. And just so you guys know, that for like, and as far as parking, I want to just go, I know what you're getting at, you know, I've got a, I know that's what I've been working on earlier about that. This is a perfect example of a property here, of what I know the parking lot to do. This, this is actually a project we did on South Roslyn Street. And, uh, we basically came in, now I may use concrete, I may use asphalt, um, depending on the disruption call there, uh, probably concrete. You know, um, and of course we got in terms of most of this lot, this lot is, uh, pretty good. Uh, if you want, we can pull that right up, just so I can give you the idea of what I'm kind of playing on. So if you look at that plot plan and already it's a lot of scale, it may have a big, big type of, uh, we're only talking about using this part of the lot. That's it. Um, so it looks like it sits way back here, but it'll all be probably right here. Um, so all of it back here is going to be exactly like this. It'll be a huge buffer right here, back here, and right here. And parking area or inner right here and it'll be basically right here and the building will sit right here.
I'm loving saying to you, you're in the package.
Sorry. Is that like parcel or a lot of seventeen as in, as ready?
And with that, I'm just taking a question that you guys may have. Um, my, my big thing is, um, you know, I, I like that, that you're not using the whole piece of property and all, um. And, uh, you know, that buffer on that's on the, um, I guess the northern side would be, um, great to separate the residential, you know, zoning from the, the new zone that we just approved and all. Um, so I think that's a good thing. It's lower back there anyway. Um, and, um, I think that's great. Uh, my biggest concern is as far as are you planning on doing like rollout parts? Are you going to do a dumpster, you know?
I'd like not to do a dumpster, uh, just because we have a dumpster at Summer Winds, uh, and actually just put a camera out there just to kind of be a little, uh, less uh, trying to get kind of dramatic because other people are using them. The dumpsters are like an invitation for everybody to throw their trash. And because I'm only going to use it in front of the slot, if I put a dumpster there, it would be very close to the road. And so if, um, Sean and I actually discussed that this morning, and I don't believe I fall into a situation with only, uh, eight units there. You know, I don't believe I fall into a situation where I'm going to have to have a dumpster. I can just have a park for each. And I can just make a rule so they have to pull it behind them. You know, and pull out on Monday and, and pull it back behind their unit on, in every other day.
That's correct. I'll just say for the code ordinances of the town, what like the, uh, developer does have to supply a service. Developer does have the option on a product the size of, uh, how they're going to implement that service.
Um, and then as far as our requirements of having a road to access things and then a parking area, the zone, you know, on the thing here is, I see the example that you've given us, you know, the big parking area, um, you know, we haven't, um, I'm glad to see that there's a cut in, you know, so like on your sketch, it looks a little bit, you know, whatever, and on the picture, it's definitely a little more reserved to make it more like an entrance. Um, that was my biggest fear is that we would have a huge parking lot that just goes from the road straight in and.
I'm, I can answer that question. So it's kind of hard to look at, but this is, this map is drawn to the property line. So imagine this is not the road. This is the right way. So this is the right way. The road would be like where the pizza paper stops at. So there would be a definite ingress like entrance because you're still twenty-five feet away from the road. People arrive here.
So is there going to be a street name for them or is it going to be like?
It would probably have a light, light drive. I would imagine. Cause the doors are going to face white light drive. I would imagine it would have like every other property we've had, like the one that's an example is South Roslyn Street address. It wouldn't have a, you know, a, a street name. I think a street name, it has, it had to have a certain distance built up before it even started on the street. Um, but I want to know exactly.
And then would they be like a mailbox bank or are we going to have, you know, four or five?
So if you're, yeah, I did take a picture of that, but they would probably be a mailbox bank. I'm not a fan of, uh, mailbox and on the street. So we probably do the same thing with this one and it's actually go back. You know, you want to take them outside, outside the parking area.
Um, do we need an access street or not? Like a little, you know, um, to, to the parking area? I mean, I know that sounds like there is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we have a, a little about length of streets and stuff like that? Cause.
All of that's going to follow the DOT guidelines, per view in terms of the length of the street, uh, even private roads have to then, uh, public roads or public roads. Of course, public roads have very strict guidelines that say here for power bills and monies and other reasons, but, uh, for this type of development, I don't believe we need a street. I think the biggest thing is the DOT guidelines for ingress and egress when it comes to actually traffic moving off of white light drive.
Okay.
Which there is of course a permitting process through DOT that require as part of the bill.
The top of the section that you, Dennis talked about it, having the nine point two point four that you put in here. Um, in the packet, I guess, that you sent out. At the very bottom of the page is nine, there's three. Sorry, it's a lot of paperwork. I appreciate it.
So it says all dwellings shall have shared rights of access along private streets and or along private drive of at least twenty feet of deep and width leading to a public and maintained street. Is that what you're talking about?
Um, let's see, yeah, um, a, uh, it says NCDOT requirement driveway with a two-way operation, sound minimum of twenty foot, maximum of thirty-six foot. Um, and I assume that it would be a two-way, not a one-way. Um, policy on street driveway access for state North Carolina DOT July two thousand and three. A lot of access requirements for individual and units in condominium townhouses projects. Um, are waived. However, the individual units shall have access through common areas, including private streets and private drives. Um, so I guess, you know, that's what I was thinking that you had to have a road to get to it.
My interpretation of this is that when there is a existing or proposed or planned private drive or private area, the unit shall have access to that, uh, not that man makes that. That's my interpretation.
Okay. You don't want like a sprawl going down white lake drive of just, you know, um, my, I guess my example would be, um, any type of new development. You know, having multiple entrances to turn in, turn out. If we can have that one entrance, um, you know, um, I'll, I'll give you the example of my mom's property over there, Resort Collection Gift Shop. It's got a big parking lot area. Um, you can turn in anywhere that you want, basically, and it's kind of annoying and ugly.
Yeah, this, um, this would definitely add. You, you would not be able to turn all of white lake drive into a parking space.
So it's into a little.
You would have to, if you've got an example, from the back wall to the, there would be at least that much of the street. But there probably is going to not be a whole screen, but that much of an entrance before you got into the parking lot.
I'm gonna go with that.
What about, I mentioned in the beginning, there's an ingress process that DOT anyways, but doesn't, white light drive, state rate fifteen fifteen. So he's going to have to meet all.
There's a really wide.
Requirements that anyway, but the way he has it set back off that property, there's plenty of room to turn around, turn again, to turn out without pulling into parking space.
Okay. And I think it's a safety thing too, like coming out, you don't have to worry about, you know, this and that, the other and.
And I would imagine there would be some type of signage. You would be able to tell where the entrance is.
Yeah, yeah, we would have signs similar like what we have there.
Not on here. We don't have a requirement. Um, for what I was. Sidewalks and moving people around the lake. You know, we've talked about having the multi-use path come all the way around at some point and not, I'm not saying that multi-use paths would be on your property, but at least you know, having walkability or something like that on the drainage. Not that you've got to, you know, put stuff in, but I would, you know, just for us as planning zoning people to say, that's something that we need to think about. Cause we, we talked about it, we took it out, the five foot mandate for sidewalk for all new development on white lake drive and all, um. But it would be nice to consider having that walkability, you know, the summer winds, um, thing for sure. We've got the fence that's there. There's no real way for people to walk off the road. Um, and again, it could always be put in with some brands or something like that in the future, um, you know, but, uh, I think, um, you know, having that walkability around white lake and connecting in, people love the multi-use path. We've got the, the hike thing this coming Sunday, um, and, um, I think that would be something that, um, just to consider as a, um, you know, don't go, I don't know, do what you want as far as fencing and whatever, but cause you got to protect property, you got to keep people from coming in, but just, I, I don't know how else to say it other than take it into consideration, I'll say, that's what we're looking forward to in the future without having to put in the code.
I'll put your mind at ease that when I sat or you guys sat, I was, I hope and I were very big part of that. I worked very hard when I was chairman of the board and going to go in there to, to get that one to move back. So if there is a sidewalk that you put there, there will be one there. Uh, and whether anybody else on that sidewalk has one there, there, there will be a space for it. So I hope everybody else can do that.
Exactly, you know, and if we need to put it in, then that's something that we need to talk about as a board.
But there will be.
Put it in.
Okay.
You know, obviously we've heard plenty over the last few years on stormwater runoff and.
Oh, yes.
So I think we just need to be considerate of that. I don't know if we need to do, you know, consider permeable surfaces or have some kind of stormwater runoff plan. And I'm sure that's part of the process you've got to have to get your permitting and all that kind of stuff. Just we just need to be mindful of that.
Now, completely agree. Yes.
I would say to that point too, by leaving all that protected buffer, that's going to really help with that. Those trees absorb a lot of that.
That's kind of one of the reasons why I left a lot of that stuff. Because that John said, it, throughout the whole back there. Can't be directly. You're still going to be direct with the buffer. Oh, yeah.
Board members, do any of you have any other questions, comments?
I just want to say that, you know, the, the way that the buildings are going to look and the diagrams that we got and stuff, I mean, it looks pretty fancy and it looks nice. It's definitely going to upgrade the look of white lake drive. It's going to give us more professional look. And it's definitely going to be, uh, something for folks that are future developers to strive for to pay, hey, you know, we got better and we've got this, we've got, you know, the architectural elements instead of just plain Jane. And again, we've got a mobile home right, part right across the road, but it gives it more of the aesthetics of that hometown feel of being somewhere. And even though it's a multi-use family, you know, place, we hope that the folks that are there are going to enjoy it and take care of it and say, hey, I'm proud to live at White Lake and this is going to be, you know, so I'm excited about it for sure. I think it's going to be an asset to our, uh, our lake and our community for sure.
Well, thank you. And I, and I said, my, my plan is to try to redefine the area and it, this sits almost directly across the street from where my sister lives, or she, you know. You ask me every one of these questions. She's, she will make sure.
All right, what is the recommendations from the board?
I think we got a list of questions and answers, right?
Yeah, that's what we're going to mention. Is it? Okay.
We just need to.
The action item for this will be to review, obviously, the special use permit and then make one of the following statements based on decision the planning board made. You can see it on the screen, but also in the packet. One was to be approved, two to be.
I'd like to make a motion, make a motion that the board has reviewed these documents and found that the special use permit is consistent with the objectives and policies in the adopted land use plan so that we would move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion carries. Um, number five, special use permit.
Sure. This is our second special use permit, uh, application of the night, and this one is located on Highway seventy-one north. Uh, pulled up on GIs and just been on the big screens here, but this is, uh, Mr. Eddie Nye with Nationwide Realty is here tonight to answer your questions. This is that proposal for a billboard there. You'll see that it, the billboard takes up a very small portion of this parcel as well, very similar to the last one. Uh, this is something that is, uh, of course allowed in the zoning district, which is RA residential agriculture. Uh, but it does require a special use permit. When there is a billboard or an advertising sign that's permanent, that is put in place on off-site, meaning there's no, uh, there's no brick and mortar, there's no store, and there's nothing like that there. So, uh, again, you can look in your, your packet here for the complete application. The checklist is the very last page in the packet. That should be an, uh, easy reference point there for you. I do realize that I forgot to check the copies of the scale drawing, uh, but they are of course included in there. Uh, and you can see my, there's a billboard location is shown, uh, on the actual, uh, map of the turn being. Uh, if there's any questions from the board, I'll be happy to entertain those. Mr. Nye may wish to, to speak or, or, uh, present to the board at this time.
I love it. Thank you for your time. We have, and the, uh, who wants to serve the board. Very simple to do it. We've all distracted land, only for the people. That's it. Simple as that. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Do you think there'd be room for a second billboard later or is it pretty much it?
I, you know, there may be room there for that stretch, because you have to view the house and be part of it, but that's not, I can do it. Um, and after I was making, um, of using the other property, maybe we go into the town, there's maybe a stall park.
Um, of using the other property, maybe going into the town, there's maybe a tall part, something like that. If that's a feasible sort of thing, we've got White Lake, um, I don't know, um, but right now, it's just one billboard, it's one location.
The billboard reveal in the one acre plan, um, would you be trimming back the trees back to the property line to allow for the slight distance and stuff too, or?
Probably trimming, yes, if you, if you really bother to see it, there's almost a map of it there. Uh, that's right, they were looking, uh, and so what you do is I talked with my guy today about mowing that down and having a. Wanting more to go in there, he looked at it and said, it's a good project, and we're going to, it's a total vegetation there.
And then the other question would be, would it be lit at any time, you know, there, there is no person that lives close by. To be affected, you got the gas station that's right there, there's no residential stuff, you know, to me, it's. I'm candidate for a billboard sign and stuff, but, you know, there is a property that's adjacent to you and, you know, they can develop it however they want. And, you know, it is listed as residential area and stuff, so I didn't know, you know.
In, in, in my, uh, team, I said, I like to do, I'm not necessarily very good, but I like, I like the vision of that, so I'll do that.
Yeah, but it's not a LED.
I think you're a little bit, point three lumens or something like that.
Correct, yeah, I was gonna say, there is a difference in a lit sign and an electronic sign, I think it'd be correct for wrong, but this is a lit sign. Place for the, the brightness.
This is gonna be one that, that you rent out.
No.
Are you gonna use it just for Nationwide Realty?
We can, we own the property and we want to sign for ourselves.
Okay.
The last question or comment would be that, um, you know, that the trees, the live oats, that they just trimmed, that, that it looks very good, that the gentleman has just trimmed and stuff. And, um, but, um, I would say that, are you fine that, um. That we won't be trimming those trees in order for, you know what I mean, like, uh. Yeah, you know, like, you know, because we definitely want to keep those there too. I mean, you know, uh, Sean, we talked about the, the DOT thing and the chicken and the egg back and forth about.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
Sure, go for it.
I was just gonna say, the, uh, I, I meant to say this actually when Ryan was presenting all some of his stuff, but. Mainly on this, the, the zoning code is antiquated, uh, in, in multiple areas, and there's not consistency there, it is a cookie cutter zoning code. Meaning it, it's, it's taken from, uh, a group of towns and, and basically tweaked mildly to. What would fit our needs, and we've talked numerous times about the need to update it and do some of that in-house. Maybe bring on an engineering consultant instead of, uh, that's more specialized in this area instead of relying on council governments. Uh, there's numerous ways we can move forward, and that's all skill and works, uh, but for this situation, if we're, John, they bring my attention that it does ask. For a DOT permit number prior, uh, uh, prior to approving special use permit, well, the DOT is gonna require a permit. From the town of White Lake before they'll issue a DOT permit, so, uh, this is a prime example to add a question of this code and. And something that needs to be changed, we, we had some minor discussions about changing on the application and getting Mr. Nye to sign a new application, however. I do believe after reading through more of the code, it does, that's gonna call for a text amendment, uh, albeit a minor one, so, uh. I say, I'll let you say, there's definitely things we're gonna do, uh, moving forward to improve our code, that's still on the back burner, so to speak, but. In this particular instance, I would certainly recommend that we do not hold Mr. Nye accountable for the DOT permit that he really cannot obtain.
The next part's the important part.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board has reviewed, th- these documents have found that special use permit is consistent with the objectives and policies in the adopted land use plan.
Second.
Aye, I think this is my area.
We could have voted on you first, we could have put you really to work.
I don't think I could have said all that you said.
All right, do we have any other business that's not on the agenda?
I have some, if I may, just a couple of brief updates, I did just let the board know that Ms. Lisa Young did inform, uh. Tricky Taylor earlier today that she would not be here, uh, so, so she did, uh, like I said, inform us that she would be absent tonight. Um, for the second thing, I wanted to tell the board that, of course, we are still working on our stormwater master plan. And if you recall, part of that plan, and I know it's been some time since April, but part of that plan is our stormwater ordinance that was tabled some time ago. We are gonna be receiving recommendations from our engineering firm, geared specifically at implementing a stormwater ordinance plan that makes sense for our community. Both for existing property and redevelopment of property, because most property, as we very well know, and, and it's quite a big challenge for us, it's already developed, so. Uh, we want, want to make sure we get that right, uh, I do recognize it has been some time before, uh, we've been able to get that in front of you. But it is coming, I wanted to remind you that it is coming, and that grant, I believe, expires in December, so we're working hard and diligently to. Complete the task prior to December, uh, through Golden Leaf funding requirements, uh, so hopefully first of the year, if not sooner, we'll have an update on. Thank you.
Um, I would also like to say, I really appreciate it getting the packet early, especially when we have things that we need to discuss and vote on and. Gives us time to look at it, that was, that was really nice.
Um, and to Sean's comment earlier, that our, um. Our plans on code is, uh, is a very, it's a very thick book, and you want to talk about, um. You know, it's a big, big book, minder. Don has got this available, or it's going to be soonly available online as well, so that way, you know, the community at large can be able to access them. Download and see, um, again, the town of White Lake is working through its website and updates and making things a little more easier to access. Um, there are definitely things that we need to change in the code that are just wrong, you know, or, uh, like Sean said, it. Made for somebody else and taken from that other situation and pieced together into bit White Lake, so. Um, you know, uh, when we are, especially me, if I'm hard on anybody about what the code says and all, it's because. It's what we, what we voted in and what we have on our books, and, um, you know, I'll say. Today and say tomorrow, if you want to change it, let's change it, and we'll make the changes and make it better for other people, and hopefully this will be a way of, uh, people being able to. Access and read and, um, see their own stuff, um, and that, uh. To, uh, what is it called, um, when you're, the, just make it clear, uh, to the public, um, what's. Transparency for, for the town and the community, so, you want to say anything else about that?
I would just say, we do have, uh, a nice list of zoning documents, so too, if there's ever any questions on zoning districts, uh, the zoning map is on there. That does have addresses, they're very tiny, I presume, a lot, a lot to see them along the way, but, uh, the zoning permits are there, the, there's a link to the GIS map, so. It's a work in progress, but we are working, uh, to improve the experience on the White Lake website, and this does come up at the bottom here, so. When you come onto the page, this is what you see at the top, and you scroll down, and there's, you know, the news and events, and. Uh, there's a calendar that's linked to the chamber now, although that may come, uh, into a different pack of implementation moving forward, but at the bottom here, you see zoning. All you have to do is click on that, it takes you right to listed zoning documents, so zoning documents are cumbersome, uh, they're, they're very lengthy, they can be very wordy. But we're trying our best to make them at least easy to digest to the, to the public.
What timeframe would you say would be like an estimate for the, you know, the map acceptance and this and that, you know, for an updated map? In the interim and then in the long term, because then we have to get the surveyor to. Read the map and then.
Right.
Get the commissioners to approve it and then publish it, whatever.
Right, so that's all done around the power bill time, which lines up with our fiscal year around July, uh, is when they open that up, submit it, and then it runs through December, so. We'll have it done prior to that, and in terms of the website, I may have misunderstood you, but, um. We will update the map on the website as soon as that's done, uh, of course, and the other thing I wanted to add on the website, we are working towards. Uh, through a, uh, independent company that will, uh, give us codes, that on the websites, having it as a digital zoning application process as well. So, uh, again, just trying to understand that use that process, that's already kind of difficult, cumbersome. But the, the map updates will take place next year.
And again, you know, we're a small community, I always work on feedback with our customers across the way there, even at, you know, the, um, um, Chamber of Commerce. But I'd say Ryan and Eddie, you know. Talk to Sean, be like, hey, here's what went well, here's what didn't go well, you know, like, till it's that improved, you know, because, uh, this zoning book is not to prevent, um. Development, uh, it's to, you know, have some set of rules for everybody, but, you know, if we can be better, give us feedback, you know, let us know how we can be better. Um, because that's the only way we can move forward.
Um, I've got one other question, where do we stand as far as our membership, are we up to numbers now, or?
We are up to date, I believe the next seats are become, uh, is it next fall or this fall? Seems like it takes place in the fall, we'll double check on that.
I just, I had someone in the community ask me that was interested in serving, when I could not remember where we were this far.
Oh, in terms of board, we have a complete board, I thought you got about seats that would be up for reappointment, the, the board is complete.
Okay. Anything else the board has to bring in? All right, it's time for our open forum, three minutes per citizen, if you would, uh, come up. And state your name and address, got three minutes, if you've got something you want to bring before us.
Three things, um, when marketing or when the, the. Planning application comes in, it may already, does it address water access? To that structure.
So you mean like for his development, do y'all say something to your buyers?
You mean like, access to White Lake or access to municipal water supply?
Access to the lake.
I just wondered if they had that in the planning, that would to me be.
That is not a, that's not a zoning application, because it's really a non-factor for certain.
Unless you're.
Unless it's next to a water that the folks across the street are coming through to get to it. That wouldn't be a zoning concern.
Yeah.
As Barney said, nip it with the boat.
Well, that, that's really overreached from a government organization standpoint, that, the government concern, the zoning concern would be to set back all of the lake if there was a lakefront property. And of course, uh, that would be something that would be taken into consideration at that time.
Yeah, very good time, um, the big book, when you're starting to improve that, can you make it searchable online? Uh, EDS searchable, look up, look, and it shows you five hundred.
I think that'll be on that website that you just did, that you can click through each article.
Correct.
The PDF would be searchable.
These are all PDFs, now they're broken down into articles that may require you to, or any, that I say you, of course, the general public. To know, uh, some I'd be able to look for, I, for instance, general regulations, we are working on bringing an entire PDF. Online, but of course, the size of it is a challenge, so that's been part of a problem in the past with our zoning, uh, information online. In terms of reliability, to be able to access it, the size of the document has been prohibitive, however, we're, once we work through that report. We may include a link at the bottom of all this, so to download the entire, uh, zoning code PDF, so it, it is searchable.
This is not a free range of what people under while you can do. Okay, and my last comment, um, Withers and Ravendale still work is really complete, does a good job, many stormwater issues. But the gentleman, Jim, James.
Jim, Harry.
Thank you, the one from the, the conservation, the county government, in his, in his president, in his presentation, at this time last year. He made it clear that he didn't have enough groundwater data to finalize the water elevation calculations for the lake. That he just didn't have that data, I was hoping Withers and Ravenell's contract would have that, it was talked about the Golden Leaf Foundation. That foundation in April, hoping to improve that scope, to improve some groundwater. Monitoring data or research and file to try and complete that application, complete that mathematical form, so we can. Figure out why the elevation in the lake is staying low. And until we complete that calculation, we'll not have all the answers that we need to work with, thanks for being there.
And I would just say to that, well, that's a very important issue, that, that's gonna be more of the purview of the board commissioners, if you want to bring that to their attention.
More than. I'm sorry, I will let you go.
Um, just two things.
That was your name?
And I do think that it improves the course of White Lake, there's one, you must not have covered. Because people have trash on their front porch, so I would have in your new development, you would make some space in the back, and they have an inflatable. Thing with sand over it far, it'll pass, uh, that there is place in the back, so that you have a covenant, that there would be only five pieces on your front. Or maybe to be some covenants, or a little, otherwise, we're still trashy part of the lake, and I don't want to get noticed, trashy part of the lake.
I agree with you on that, I do agree with you there.
And then the other one, the small water range, please run it to the back.
Oh, yeah, it's got an accolade, that's, that's worth.
Any other? Comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor say aye, all those like sign, we are adjourned.